Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Beacon Board of Education. Please rise for the special allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America's stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go on, Paul.
Larry Cohen.
Here.
Betsy Dennis.
Yeah.
Jennifer Edge, excused. Christine Galvo, excused. Frank Garnett, excused. Georgia Hatchen.
Here.
Mary Beth Stevens.
Here.
Bill Zaw.
Here.
Melissa Thompson.
Here.
Mr. Hilberg, if you'll review the fires.
Directly behind the audience is the director, it's the left and right.
Welcome. Mr. Hilberg, who are you, Sina? For Michelle.
I would be delighted, if you recall, at our last board meeting, we had the reports from our elementary buildings. And this evening, we're going to hear from two personnel services, the high school and the middle school. And we'd like to start with our excellent leader of VPS, Mr. Frank Mollhern.
While I'm speaking, you're going to be getting just a sample of something I'm going to be talking about to take with you. Because it'll be so brief, this'll give it a little perpetuity. First of all, the 2012-13 school year began very well for special education. A couple of things you need to know. First of all, while these two young ladies are handing out something to each of you, I want to remind you that October is Disability Awareness Month. Each school has the opportunity to put on a display on Disability Awareness Month, and teachers have been provided with links to information and lesson plans focused on this theme. And I'd like to invite the board to take these posters, use them, you all at your job sites or wherever, to celebrate and make people aware of disabilities. We also have, and thanks to Dr. Sevreding and his staff, the BHS Gallery is open, and there are displays in there, and a video, a series of videos that are running on disabilities that if you ever get a chance, you could stop in and see. I want to thank the Spectrum Parents Group led by Mrs. Novell, Mrs. Brand, and Mrs. Cohen for pulling that display together. They contacted over thirty disability agencies and got free materials and information, posters to spread around. And there have been gift boxes sent to every school in the district to make kids and staff awareness. It's Disability Awareness Month, so there's your gift for that. As I said, the school year started extremely well for special education. There are two key things you need to know. We have two new classes. We have, you'll hear it called an ADL Life Skills Class at Rombaut Middle School. ADL stands for Adaptive Daily Living, and that's grade six, seven, and eight. And we have a new class at Forestal, which is a K-1, 2 Spectrum class. You should be aware and proud that since September 2010, this district has added fifty-two new special education classroom seats for students who otherwise would be attending out-of-district schools. There's fifty-two new seats in the last twenty-four months. Thanks so much to each of the principals who have cooperated and supported these initiatives. Thanks to the parents for their courage, and thanks also for the courage of the board to support such initiatives. The second thing I would mention is that we have a new model, particularly at the elementary level, for the 2012-13 school year. As you know from the policy option briefs that we all sat through and participated in last year, day and night, we came up with a model for having special education predominantly on the elementary level in two of our schools. So Glennum and Sargent Schools have the majority of our special education programs in their buildings. Each school has approximately ninety to ninety-four special education students. The reason for this was to have continuous services, both in inclusion and self-contained and resource settings, so students, when they progress, do not need to move to another building. Those students who have resource room services only are at South Avenue. And there are ten students approximately at the South Avenue. And at JV Forestal, it offers resource room services to fourteen students, plus the new K-2 Spectrum class. That's a lot to get done for a new school year. The teachers and the faculty and the principals did it marvelously, and thanks to Dr. Walkley and Harvey Hilberg for making it happen as well. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mollhern, I'd like to thank you for your tireless work, your great leadership, and really facilitating all that you described. So, thank you so much. And in particular, thanks to the parents and students that helped with the display in the community room. Really amazing, and I would recommend that the board take a peek at it before you leave tonight. Next, we'd like to introduce Dr. John Sevreding, high school principal.
Let me just put the agenda up, please. Thank you for this opportunity. Let me just share with you the agenda, but before I do, I just would like you to know, we're already one month into the school year, so briefly report, we had a great opening. Things went very smoothly. Schedule worked well. There were really no hiccups to speak of, so we're, you know, again, well into the year. I'll quickly report, if you recall, the opening for incoming freshmen was different than we've done in the past. We were able to put a pretty extensive orientation program together. The first day, we focused on the freshmen and spent time with them, specifically going over the handbook, code of conduct, and, very importantly, obviously, the Dignity Act. And we did the same thing for the sophomores, and juniors, and seniors, and we were finished with, you know, giving everyone a presentation by Monday morning. So it worked extremely well. So, that model seems to be okay. The agenda for tonight, Mr. O'Neill, if we're going to be talking very briefly, and I put it on slide form so you get a sense of where we are. The enrollment and staffing data, academic goals, I want to spend some time on. Our initiatives continued and new, and also, you know, building a culture of success. So I'm just going to briefly touch on those. I know my eyes don't work anymore, so I don't know if you can, you can see those numbers, but if you look at our enrollment summary of, for this year, comparing July 1 and October 5, last Friday, you can see the numbers are pretty, you know, status quo. If you look at the bottom total, July 1, we had two hundred, I mean, 1,049 students, and by October 5, we had 1,050, plus one. But then if you look at the right, we've been tracking new entrants since 9/5, and we took in sixty-two new kids from the first day of school. So you say, "Well, how come the numbers are the same?" Well, sixty-one left us. So I've been doing a profile on the kids that came in, which I think is extremely important. And if you look at the chart there, tracking them by age, beginning from thirteen all the way to twenty years of age, and what that tells us, obviously, I have another piece of data there that deals with the number of credits some of the students have, and, you know, that's very important. So if you can see there, we have in the eleventh grade, one student who's twenty, and you've got nineteen-year-olds in twelfth grade. But the important thing is if they're close to graduating, you know, that's a whole different story. But in many of these cases, they're not. And that's what we've been trying to look at, and hopefully, you know, we'll be able to, you know, come, what are we going to do, you know, with people like, for example, in our ninth grade? And a lot of times, it's a transition process, students coming from other districts and coming to Beacon, and, you know, people that are eighteen, nineteen years old at, you know, with maybe one or two credits. So that's, you know, a persistent problem, and we'll continue to see what the answer to that is going to be. Our staff, you can see there, we have a total of, you know, seventy-seven point six full-time equivalents for the teaching staff, our support staff, and the administration. I'd like to, you know, acknowledge, you know, the administrative team here. Tom O'Neill, to my left, to your right, behind me. Tim Farron, who is the administrative intern, and certainly Eric Romanino, although he's a district person, he's in the high school, so guess what? No. So, we have a solid administrative team. Brian Saltish, oh, he's dressed in blue as well. But, no, that's not a high school. He's a middle school guy, but you see, they learn well. All in blue, white shirts and ties. All right? So I'm very thankful of them. Their work is much appreciated, and, you know, I think, you know, we've accomplished a great deal. The next slide, I want to just spend a little bit of time on our academic goals for this year. The first one deals with academic rigor. If you recall, two of the board goals, academic rigor and academic performance. And I have to thank Dr. Walkley. She and I have been working together coming up. Now, it's actually, it's comical when you think about it, not working together, but it's comical, in the sense that, and she can tell you how many times we rewrote our objectives, and I'll just give you a little bit of background on that. Tom, the next one, please. There's a part of that academic rigor, which is the New York State Growth Component, all right? Those are the teachers, and there are thirty of them, so you know, there are thirty teachers in this building, whose majority of their students, it has to be a majority of their students, terminate in a Regents' Examination. So if a teacher has a Regents' Exam and it's more than half of their student population, they come under this particular Growth Component, where they write a slope or a student learning objective for that course. And we spent a great deal of time on the last couple of conference days, and then the last one that we had, and I'm quite pleased, you know, with the products that they delivered. We did it by department, the departments, and, for example, if all the teachers that are teaching U.S. History and Government, they got together, wrote the learning objectives. The only thing that changed in that were their student population. That's the only thing different about it. So I think we have some solid learning objectives. So there's thirty people, and they will be measured at the end of the year, you know, their twenty points with that particular assessment. You ask, "Well, what about all the other teachers that do not have a Regents' Exam, but it culminates in a local exam?" And what we decided to do, and this is where the thing changed, it must have changed three, four times, that we, you know, we wrote a Building Learning Objective. So all those people that do not have a majority will be under the Building Learning Objective for the New York State Component. And, you know, I wrote the objective, and if you look, I guess it's hard to tell with the lights on and everything, I don't know if you can make that out, but what we did is I looked at the data from last June, so let me just kind of encapsulate this, all right? The school-wide learning objective for the academic rigor, because there's another thing that the state's going to tell us to do. We need to have rigor in our academia, and it's for English and Social Studies. X number of students must score a seventy-five on the Regents' Exam, and it's eighty percent for the math. So we decided to tackle the ELA and Social Studies first. And when I looked at the data from last June, although they're not the same population, but district-wide, year after year after year, there seems to be a very flat curve of how the kids do on exams. When I looked at that data, we have, just to give you an example, for the English eleven Regents, okay, below seventy-five, so between seventy-one and seventy-two, seventy-three and seventy-four, we had nineteen students there. So the question is, it's not going to take us long or with a directed effort to push these kids over to seventy-five. That's just for the English eleven. For the Social Studies, the two Social Studies exams, there were a total of forty-seven kids between seventy-one and seventy-five. So we decided, what can we do to push those kids? It's not the same ones, but it's, the data's been so flat, to push kids who would potentially score like that above that rigor, the seventy-five. All right? So it's totally, there's like sixty-six kids altogether in Social Studies and English. And if you look at underneath that, sixty-five to seventy, there are more than a hundred kids who scored there. So the question is, how do we get those kids to the next level? All right? And I'll talk a bit about that. For the academic performance, we have a School-Wide Slope or Student Learning Objective for all the teachers. We are going to be, or I've written the learning objective for all teachers for the local academic performance, and that will read something like this, that for all of our Regents' Exams, every one of them, we want to increase the percentage of kids that are passing. And if you look at the total, we had last June, ninety-two kids score between sixty-one and sixty-four. So the question is, let's do it. You know, we got to concentrate of those students doing better. All right? So how are we going to do that? Tom? There is a, what we talked about is a toolbox, and we're going to be developing, you know, toolboxes for teachers where, and that box is Teacher Toolbox, but technically, it should say Teacher-Staff Toolbox, because it's every adult in the building should be helping to get those kids to pass the Regents or become more rigorous in their performance. All right? So we're going to create academic language, per-discipline specific, and then foster, there's so much common vocabulary. If you look at the exams where kids just barely missed, if you look at those exams, they could be missing a question, multiple choice, for example, because there was a word in there that they didn't understand. And our intent then is to do things like Word for Today, everybody, not just the teachers who are teaching the classes, it's adults, and we're going to publish that so that we can concentrate on those students. We're going to identify the students who would be in that, in that particular grouping, that barely passing, or I mean, just above the sixty-five, and that's everybody knows who they are, and focus on that. We're going to do, starting the more integrating content review through authentic applications. We want to do interdisciplinary applications. I've seen teachers, for example, in science, focus on things that necessarily are not science-related, but everybody is, as we would say, everybody's a reading teacher. There should be literacy skills taught in those classes as well. And assessment of data, and focus on students below the threshold scores, which I talked about earlier. I know Mr. Hilberg asked for a funny story, I'll just kind of weave one in right now, is that I think it should be everybody doing this kind of thing. So the, a couple of days ago, I heard one of our security staff, he had spoken to a student earlier, and had asked him to do something, and the student, you know, forgot. And he said the second time he caught him, he's, "Young man, I'm going to give you a reprieve." So the student looks at him, you know, "What do you mean by reprieve?" Here, again, Word for Today, you know, you'll see it in Social Studies, reprieve. It's in, it's, they are, there are exam questions that have that in there. So, you know, everybody can be part of this. In PhysEd, same thing, you know, you walk in there and they have a Word for Today. And we're going to have to ingrain that in all the discipline. All right? Mr. O'Neill, the initiatives that I just briefly touched on, continued. Again, the NOVANet, we need to explore, you know, how we can use that even more effectively than we've had in the past, certainly for assessment for kids that are in AIS programs. They've got a wonderful assessment up front and keep track of kids. We've got to look at credit recovery. Some of the people that I spoke about that are aging out don't have credits, I mean, they could be working at home on some of this stuff. And another interesting thing, we had a young lady, whole family, they moved, it was an emergency, and the whole family moved to Morocco. She is one and a half credits shy from getting a Regents' Diploma with distinction. We're working on right now, she can be in Morocco, log on to NOVANet, we've set it up with a couple of teachers, where she can get the one and a half credits there and get a Regents' Diploma from Beacon High School. So it's got so much potential, and we need to just do more of it. The BURB team, as you well know, last year, we reconstituted a team, which we continue to do. The BURB is a, you know, Building Emergency Response Team. We have a wonderful cross-section of staff with specific skills, including clerical, custodial, Donnie Williams from Beacon City Police is on our team, and we're continuing, you know, to become efficient and proficient at doing the emergency drills. New, we, this summer, the transition of Rombaut Middle School to Beacon High School, we identified about twenty-five students that were at high risk. We ran a six- or seven-day program with them, and the way that happened was that we took five teachers that they had in common with one another, and these teachers worked with them, and now are shepherding them, so that there's constant communication to home, rather than waiting for like the five weeks, and there've been meetings, guidance meeting, teacher meetings, and so forth. What I like to do is examine probably for years, next year, you know, how do we develop a, you know, a program where we can, you know, build something like this, you know, especially for all ninth graders coming here, because that's the time when they really need, you know, a very solid mentoring program. We talked a bit about the Dignity for All Act. We did the orientation with all the students and staff. We had a wonderful speaker for the last conference day. About a hundred and thirty people listened to James Childs, so we're still, we're exploring that further. The APPR, as you know, is a new initiative, but I'm telling, you know, I get the feeling that people are beginning to settle in. One important part of that, Tom, if you can go to the next one, is this one right here, you know, we want to build a culture of success, and certainly, we want a positive school climate, which I think, you know, we are not completely done, we have lots more to do, but I think we're well on our way. The teamwork and collegiality, and that's critical, because it's going to be in sync with the two Student Learning Objectives and the local Building Performance. Why? Because all teachers are now going to be, you know, evaluated based on a Building Slope, so where everybody's together. We're all in it together for that. So it's then critical for everybody to be a team, to do this. We need to have continuous school improvement, and we must attain higher levels of student achievement as per, you know, the two performance and rigor, you know, Building Goals, you know, that I briefly talked about. So I think I've expended my time, and I, any questions? I'd be happy to entertain them.
You've mentioned NOVANet.
Right.
And that's the first I've heard of it. Do you mind explaining what that is a little bit more?
Sure. NOVANet is a web-based program that is so rich with all kinds of coursework, where students can independently, you know, work on these courses, ranging from support courses, ranging from, you know, English nine through twelve, even advanced placement courses are available for kids. We've been focusing primarily on students that are in AIS for math or English, and they work at their own pace. There is an assessment piece in the front, so if, let's say, a youngster has taken a course, and they perhaps passed the course but failed the Regents' Exam. Well, they could go and log on, onto NOVANet, and it will do an assessment, and it will tell them where they're weak. They can go through chapter by chapter of the course, and they take, you know, a test at the end. If they pass, we set the mark, let's say, at eighty, or whatever you wanted to set at, and then they move on, and they, and they could do this either in the lab, where a lot of our AIS teachers, you know, use that, but also when they're home. It's a twenty-four-seven opportunity. So we have thirty licenses, and students, when they get home at night, could technically log on and continue work. So that's how we've been using the program. And the other way to do it is that they can actually either go through the course, or they can also, you know, have an assessment where they're weak, and then it programs opportunities for them to work on those weaknesses. Most of the time, they would also, their work, like if it was Social Studies, they'd be doing, let's say, a DBQ or an essay-related piece of work that would get turned into the teacher, and then the teacher would track how they're doing as well.
Dr. Sevreding, thank you so much. I know you were really working tirelessly to get that ball across the finish line with the administrative staff, the faculty. We know it's going to be a great accomplishment this year, so if you'd want to create a vote, thank you.
You're welcome.
You too, Tom. And now, we're pleased to introduce Ms. Lazarus, our middle school principal.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hilberg, and thank you for giving me the opportunity, everyone, to speak tonight. It's my pleasure to be the last person in the list, which means I have the least amount of time, so I am compelled to be concise and to be brief, which is difficult for me to do. That being said, I'm going to follow my notes closely. I want to begin by telling you a little bit about our current enrollment. This year, we have six-hundred-and-eighty-four students at Rombaut Middle School, which is twelve fewer than last year. It breaks out as follows. We have two-hundred-and-fifty-one students in grade six, two-hundred-and-twelve in grade seven, and two-hundred-and-twenty-one students in grade eight this year. We have sixty-point-six instructional staff, including our part-time and our travelers, with whom we share instructional capacities from some of the other buildings. We have five CPS staff, we have ten teaching assistants, and we have eleven teacher aides or monitors, if you will. I am pleased to share the administrative responsibilities with two assistant principals who do an incredible job, Mr. Paul Weir and Mr. Brian Saltish, who is dressed in Rombaut Blue this evening. We're very happy to see that. No stealing. No stealing. Okay. Mr. Mollhern spoke to you for a few minutes about our, one of our new classes, the ADL Life Skills Class. I am so pleased to tell you about the wonderful integration that those students are making. And I'm really impressed with how well and how warmly the general ed and the other student, the other special education students have accepted our ADL students, our Life Skills students, who do operate their classroom differently, who learn in different manners, and it's just wonderful to see how they are blending in. It's great. They have become part of the Rombaut family. We also have a new Living Environment Regents' Class introduced this year, thanks to Mr. Brian Saltish, I do want to give credit, he came up with the idea. I really enjoy it when someone brings you a problem and a solution. We had too many students to fit into the one Regents' Level Science Class that we had, the Earth, the Earth Science Class. And the solution to that was to see, could we come up with a way to add another Regents' Class? And indeed, we were able to, doing a lot of very creative scheduling, we added a Living Environment Regents' Class this year, and we're pleased to be able to offer more students the opportunity to complete their first high school credit at the middle school level. Along with that, we have three new staff members this year. Mrs. Delilah Rugg, who is the instructor for our Life Skills Class. Mrs. Jennifer Waite-Q, who is doing Synergistics and AIS Math, and Mrs. Denise Klein, who is Resource and Special Ed, Science Six Special Ed. This year, we started off, before the school year even began, with our August orientation. We had a wonderful turnout, and I want to particularly thank our National Junior Honor Society students Society students who served as tour guides and traffic monitors in the hallways with all of our new 6th graders, and then we had a second session for 7th and 8th graders, and it was a wonderful preamble to beginning the school year. At the beginning of the school year, we too had our grade-level assemblies for grade 6, 7, and 8, where we went over and thoroughly explained the code of conduct and pointed to the new DASSA, the Dignity for All Students Act, and we explained to our students how important it is for them to contribute to the school climate and culture by taking a positive responsibility for making sure that we have no bullying going on, that we have no students feeling intimidated in any way, and that's one of the things that classically can happen at the middle school level. So I'm very pleased that our students have been very receptive to the new DASSA regulations and understanding at their own level, making it user-friendly for their levels, that they understand what's going on, and they understand that our theme for this year is respect and responsibility to support success. I'm happy to say that the PTO this year has already held a spirit wear and bake sale, and they've launched a membership campaign and a fall fundraiser, so if you happen to want to come over and take a look at the items that they have, our spirit wear is visibly on display every Friday. Our students wear blue and gold, and they advertise their pride in being part of Rombell, and a good number of our staff also wear blue and gold every Friday to show their pride in being part of our Rombell Middle School. We have also started monthly meetings with our PTO. We've had a number of staff members actively participating in our PTO programs and presenting at each meetings, and I think it's very important to establish and to strengthen those connections between our staff and our PTO, so that everyone understands that that partnership is not just instructional, it really is a comprehensive approach. We, they have been working very closely with our faculty and staff to support student success. As far as our safety procedures, we have had seven of our fire drills so far, and the remainder of them will be scheduled for the springtime. We had the one mandated bus drill series completed without any incidents. We have had several of our bus routes changed, and parent drop-off pickup has been modified, and we found that during the first few weeks of school, it has really smoothed out a great deal. We've gotten down into the rhythm and the pattern and the cycle of school very successfully, and we see that that's working very well with our students. We've begun our faculty meetings, team meetings, grade-level meetings, coordinator meetings, PPS meetings, and in all of those, the underlying themes have been APPR, our student learning outcomes, and fulfilling and exceeding all of the components of our Regents reform agenda. I did forget to mention before, I stepped ahead of myself, I wanted to talk a little bit about our class sizes, our average class size data. Grade 6, we have 24 students. Grade 7, the average is 20 students, and grade 8, the average is 20 students. That's commendable. The largest class sizes, grade 6, we have 26 students. Grade 7, we have 29 students in the largest class, and grade 8, we have 28 students. Those are large, but those are manageable. Of course, we would like to see reductions in class sizes, but those are the numbers that we have for this year, and I did want to make sure that I included that. Upcoming Rombell Middle School events, October 19th will be School Picture Day, and our School Spirit Week will be held October 22 to 26, and the culminating event will be our Harvest Fall Dance. And that's sure to be a lot of fun, and we invite you all to come and join us. And please mark your calendars and plan to come and join us on November 3 or December 1 for our school play. We are going to be doing Annie Junior, and in spite of the weather forecasts, we do believe the sun will come out tomorrow. Our closing interesting item is a wonderful item, and it is a show and tell. I'm going to pass this around and give you the opportunity to take a look at a beautiful presentation certificate that was given to us. What is it telling you about? It gives you an idea about the United States flag that has been donated to our school. This certificate signifies that a United States flag has been donated to our school, a flag that was thrown on a combat search and rescue mission at Camp Bastion Airfield in Afghanistan. It has been presented to Rombell Middle School by Air Force Guardsman Elizabeth Colton, who is the mother of grade 8 Rombell Middle School student Sierra Caban. Our Student Council is going to be working with our staff in order to find a place of honor and recognition for the flag and the presentation certificate. It will be on view in our kiosk and lobby. We want to make a big deal out of this. We think that it is wonderful that one of our students' mother is an active Air Force Guardsman, and she saw to it that a flag was presented to us, and we're going to have a presentation ceremony, and when we do, of course, you will be invited. But we want to make sure that our students understand how important it is and that they see that connection. So our, the president of our Honor Society and our national, our Student Council, the National Junior Honor Society and the Student Council together, will be writing the letter of thanks and appreciation to Air Force Guardsman Elizabeth Colton on behalf of Rombell Middle School. At this point, if you have any questions about the very smooth opening of Rombell Middle School this year, we are up and running and doing business. So if there's any question that you might have, I'd be happy to try and answer.
Well, that was a wonderful report. Thank you so very much. What a nice touch, touching on that. Thank you so much, Mrs. Lazarus. And also, before we launch the next portion of the agenda, I'd like to welcome Kara Conrad from Southland, and someone was trying to hide in the back, Mr. Eric Wright, my new principal from Forestville, thanks for coming out tonight, faculty and staff and guests. It's great to see you.
Motion for executive session.
Motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular person and collective negotiations under the Taylor Law. The board will return as soon as possible.
Second? Comments or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. The board will turn as soon as possible.